Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening grateful for what has been a very smooth transition into the new school year on this very first day for students. We are grateful for the dedication of our employees who readyed schools, buses, cafeterias, and classrooms for the students' arrival. And we ask your blessing upon each of them as we move toward forward into this school year. Grant each of us the willingness and compassion necessary to care for each student and help our students and parents to do their part in making this a great year for learning. These things we ask in your name.
Dr. Kraft, would you lead us in the pledge?
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Foote.
Mrs. Sessibana here. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Kraft, Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mrs. Daisart.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mrs. Nakosh.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Foote. Before we go on to the agenda items, I'd like to take this point of privilege over here for all the board members to wish two of our board members a very happy birthday. Happy birthday to Mr. Joe Long. Have a great day, Joe.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Daisart and fellow board members. It's always nice to have another one.
Yes, it is.
And I can't think of a better group of people than to celebrate with me than my school board family. Thank you, guys.
And also having a happy birthday is Dr. Henderson Lewis. Happy birthday.
And I'll just echo the same thing Mr. Long said. It's great to have, you know, make another birthday and also to celebrate with you all and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday and many, many more, guys.
Thanks.
Yes, please, Dr. Lewis.
And also I'd like to take a point of privilege. Last month for Andrew Jackson, it was celebrated the 50th year of the existence of Andrew Jackson. It was a wonderful event happened at Dockville and many of the faculty members participated. Our assistant superintendent, Ms. Lawson, was there, but also, and Dr. Kraft was there as well. And many of the original faculty members when the school first opened actually participated in the event. So that was really, really nice, as well as many of the former administrators participated. And so it was good to go back and I also will say in January, I would have started 20 years. I started on January 13 at Andrew Jackson. So it was a really great experience. That was 1997, you know, that we participated in to see so many of our colleagues and of course, since Katrina, many of those individuals are not, no longer working in the parish. It was, it was a great reunion to see many of our colleagues that we served with so many years. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because it happened last month and forgot to do it at the last meeting.
Great. Okay.
And I think kudos to Denise Cooper, I think, who organized that event, as usual, and did a super job from what I hear.
And we felt the same way. Things never change.
Those Andrew Jackson minds. And I have to say, that was my alma mater, Andrew Jackson. So that was very good. Okay. And if I could take a point of privilege also, Ms. Foote, you mentioned in your, in your prayer about today being our first day of school for all of our students. I just want to give a big thanks to superintendent administration, all of our staff members, the teachers, all the support personnel. I think, you know, the first day went very well. Last Friday was the rally for all the students, not the students, the employees. Today was the first day for the students, the employees and, you know, it was a one and men of Penn, y'all did a great job as usual. You brought a lot of smiles to our staff members and, you know, after I received a bunch of comments from the teachers and saying how wonderful and support personnel, how wonderful the program was and it gave them a boost of energy for the brand-new school year and it was really a great program. So thank y'all very much for coordinating all that for our employees. And thanks to all the, everyone who, and Ms. Lawson, who also always does a super job. And Ms. Foote. So, okay, well, thank you very much. And next item on the agenda, super news. Ms. Foote.
We have Alex Schneider with us tonight.
Good evening. So this evening, I actually have two exciting projects to share from the communications team at the board. And the first is the super news, which is an abbreviated version of Penn TV's hindsight, which is still going to air. It's produced three times a year and looks back at the previous month's best news from the district. And this is produced by Barry Lemoine and Jack Jackson of Penn TV, who really worked hard on making sure that super news could happen. So I want to thank them. When we got together with Barry Lemoine and Jack Jackson to figure out how could we best use hindsight on both our website and Facebook page, knowing that our website has been viewed since the spring over 110,000 times, and our web, and our Facebook page videos, some of our most popular videos have been seen over 32,000 times. We tried to figure out how we can get some of the work that they were doing in Penn TV on both of these platforms. And we realized that hindsight was just a little too long. So what we decided to do was go ahead and abbreviate hindsight into super news, news from the superintendent's office, that we are going to air at the beginning of each month and will first be aired to the board to ensure that you guys are able to see it before the public does. Once we've shown the board super news, we are going to air it on both the website and the Facebook page. And then hindsight will follow it every three or four months and kind of encapsulate the bigger couple of months that that was airing. So without further ado, we are going to watch this first month's super news.
From the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
Hi, I'm Alex Schneider. Barry and I will serve as your hosts each month on super news. We'll begin with a look at our state-of-the-art facilities that remain busy throughout the summer months with teachers and students. This summer were the more than 70 youngsters who took swimming lessons. First through fifth graders, all residents of St. Bernard Parish participated in the program, taking hour-long lessons for two weeks, learning the basics of swimming and water safety.
And while these kids were splashing in the pool, the performers of the Performing Arts Academy were making a splash onstage with its production of Beauty and the Beast. Over 70 students participated, as well as several alumni who returned to mentor the younger students. Audience at these sold-out shows were blown away by the music and magic onstage, claiming this was the best show ever. Bravo to Bell, the beast, and everyone who brought this Disney classic alive.
(singing) Have their uses too, mainly to extend a family tree. Pumpkin, extend with me.
Tale as old as time, song as old as rhyme, beauty and the beast.
Summertime was also a time for our summer skills program. About 120 first through fifth grade students participated, while 137 middle school students took part in the program. The good news, all middle school students successfully completed the program and advanced to the next grade. Our 110 high schoolers also did well, with 90% of the students who attended earning all credits attempted.
Teachers were also learning, as demonstrated at the Mississippi River Delta Institute. The goals of this program included increasing teachers' Mississippi River-related content knowledge, enhancing their STEM-focused investigative skills, expanding literacy skills, and helping guide the development of meaningful and engaging classroom investigations for their students. The institute was a true success and we thank the Mural Foundation for helping provide this opportunity.
Other teachers, nearly 250 in all, participated in various professional development provided by our district. 20 new teachers participated in a certification program called Believe and Prepare that was offered by the St. Bernard Parish School District, while 33 teachers and 18 administrators from across the district attended the Department of Education's Teacher Leader Summit in New Orleans.
And now we'll go from summer training to summer hosting at the MoMA Center, as nearly 50 Beta Club Board of Directors visited the parish during its Beta Club convention. A fest of crawfish, shrimp, gumbo, fried seafood, and bread pudding were all part of the food and the fun. This trip marked the first time since Hurricane Katrina that the Beta Club Board of Directors had visited St. Bernard, so Ms. Foote spoke about the impact of the storm and our recovery from it. She was also recognized by the National Board of Directors for the Beta Club for her tireless efforts.
We'd like to give you a plaque that says for your dedication to the National Beta Club, Doris Foote, Louisiana State Council. Let us lean by serving others. She's a perfect example.
Following the launch of the new St. Bernard Parish School District's website early last spring, our new school websites became available last month, providing parents and families with a wealth of information to stay informed and involved throughout the school year. School menus, bus routes, calendars, and upcoming events, athletic and club schedules, and information about students' homework and assignments are now just a click away.
Well, that would do it for this first edition of super news.
But before we go, let's take a quick look as we welcome our students back to school on their first day. It promises to be a great year and we remind you all to picture the possibilities.
Oh, and don't forget, our annual Day of Reflection Breakfast is Friday, August 26, and we look forward to seeing you all there.
And we'll see you next time as we let the super news roll.
The super news roll. We'll see you next time.
on both our website and Facebook, so that people can kind of see with their own two eyes all of the great things that our district is accomplishing throughout the school year. And the next one will be in September. I also am here this evening to follow up on our conversation from this spring, which was the launch of our district website. Last month, we did launch our school websites and each of our schools in particular, I wanted to highlight two of the areas that you guys had asked about in particular. So the first is going to be the teacher pages that will have both the homework listed for parents on a nightly basis. It will have calendars. It will also have any announcements that the parents need to be made aware of. And then at each of the schools is also the calendar. And so one of the sheets that you have in front of you kind of has screenshots of both of those. You can see what a teacher page looks like for each of our teachers. Right now, you are seeing an example from Shamet High School, which is Allison Schroder. You'll notice her biography is available for family who are interested in getting to know their teachers a little bit more. You'll also see the different pages on the left-hand side that will be available for her as well. On the next page, you'll see an example of the calendar. I know Mr. Warner had asked in particular about athletic events being posted. At the high school, all athletic events that have been given to the high school are posted and current, so you can find all of our football games are up, our basketball games, and as athletic events become available, those will be added. You'll also find that different events to other extracurricular activities and school dances, things like that, will also be available on the calendar. And so those are two pieces of good news from the communications office.
Thank you, Alex. Great job to you and to Barry and Jack, to the men of Penn. That was very, very good and that was awesome, actually. And it's great to keep everyone informed of what's going, the good things in the super news going on in our schools. And does anyone else have any, does anyone have any comments or questions, Mr. Warner?
I think it's fantastic that the teachers have their page on here. The syllabus is there for parents to go look at and it's, you know, it's just a click away to find out, okay, what we're supposed to be looking at today, what we're reading with the homework assignments. That's fantastic. Great job. Fantastic. Bravo.
Thank you. Very good. Dr. Kraft?
Yes, it's a super technique and the website and all this information is going to make a full connection with the entire community and sometimes with people outside the community because they are being same and hard to view this. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Anyone else? Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you again, Alex. In the short time that you've been in this position, you've certainly elevated the level of communication between social media and the website, so thank you for that. My question was, I remember when you were first introducing the website, you talked about the customized calendar view. So how does that work again for a parent that might want certain events to pop up on the calendar?
That's a wonderful question. So we will, we piloted this component with our ninth-grade academy parents and we are planning on moving forward with parents at parent-teacher conferences in October. We will be training and giving out documentation for parents on how they can go about registering for the website. I get all of the registration notifications through my email and we've actually had a good number of parents go ahead and do so. Once they've registered to follow a given website, what they can go in and do is those colors above the calendar each correspond to a different type of event, whether it be athletic or a general school event. And so they can eliminate events that they don't think are necessarily relevant to them. If their child isn't in an athletic event, they can go ahead and take those off and they can customize it from there. They could also go ahead and sign up for e-alerts, which essentially would allow them to decide whether or not they wanted a text message or an email. Anytime something had been updated to that calendar, they would be also able to do that for the teacher websites. So examples of where we are hoping to see this used is if at an elementary level, they are going on a field trip next week and a parent wanted to, or, excuse me, a teacher wanted to go on their website and make an announcement that says, "Parents, I sent home a permission slip. It is due next Thursday." It would automatically go through the website, so there's no, you know, teacher phone number or anything like that. It would go through the website and notify parents that that communication had been posted to their website. So parents will have quite a few different opportunities to do that. They can also, the site is customizable, so they can see it on their phones, they can see it on their tablets or whatever else would be easiest for them.
All right. Thank you so much.
Very good. Parents are going to love that feature.
Oh, yeah, that is.
And the teachers, too, yes. Direct communication. Yes. Okay. Anyone else? Any questions, comments? Mr. Long?
Just to agree with everyone that's spoken, it's great. I'm so glad to see it's fully implemented and you guys have done a great job. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Ms. Foote, you didn't see it?
No. Okay. Okay. Thank you again. Great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the update on test scores.
Good evening. I have some information for you tonight on several test scores to share, several tests to share with you. So the state released test score data on LEAP, ACT, and AP in the last couple of weeks. So on the first handout that you have, you have the charts that I normally provide for you. This year includes the percentage of students who scored mastery or above in our district and the state in LEAP 2016. Now, in the past, I've given you the percentage of students scoring basic and above because that's how the state reported it, but they're moving to reporting mastery and above. So this year, I made our chart, this percentage scoring mastery and above. So that's going to be what you see there, and that's LEAP 2016, math, English, and science on that first chart. Okay? And on the second chart, the second page of your handout, you'll see displayed the percentage of students in all subjects in grades three through eight combined scoring mastery and above. And I have for you the state on the left and our district on the right. And you'll see that this past spring, 41% of our students scored mastery or above on all the tests combined, grade three through eight, which was an increase from the 34% last year, which was a gain of seven. Below that chart, you'll see I put some highlights for you from all the test releases that we had the past couple of weeks, and I'm just going to point a few out for you. The eighth-grade math scores did rank fifth in the state in percent mastery or above. Eighth-grade math also ranked fifth in the state in percent advanced. Fifth-grade science ranked seventh in the state in percent mastery or above. Algebra and of course exam ranked fifth in the state in percent proficient and in percent excellent. Geometry ranked seventh in the state in percent proficient and percent excellent. And we received some data on the AP test. Our students ranked 14th in the state with the percent of tests taken where students scored a three or higher. And then finally, the ACT composites were released. Our students raised the composite from 19.2 to 19.6, which was the most growth in the area. So we had some good results released from multiple tests. And of course, as you know, this is a result of a great deal of work on the parents, students, and teachers, and administrators, and we're very proud of them.
Are there any questions? Comments? Ms. Foote?
No.
Ms. Lametta, thank you so much for bringing these test scores to our, to our meeting tonight. And it's great that we are in the top five and many of the courses in top seven in the math, well, science and math. So in 14th in advanced placement and to have the ACT increase the most in the areas is wonderful news also. So we appreciate the information and congratulations to all of the teachers and our students who worked very hard to do so well on our state testing. And now I know recently, and not to overshadow our test scores being so high in the state, recently there was some data for Louisiana, and I wanted to, wanted to ask Ms. Foote if she could get some additional information for us at maybe our next committee meeting on the data that was sent to us on Louisiana. But of course, we're highest, very, very high in all of our test scores for the state of Louisiana, so that's great news for us. And again, congratulations to our students and our teachers. Great job on the increases in test scores. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Okay. Next item is our personnel changes. Good evening, Mr. Graham Berry.
Good evening.
You've been busy, huh?
Oh, yes. We stay busy. But we staffed all the teachers.
Everyone, huh?
Everyone.
Awesome.
Every teacher.
Great job.
Yesterday.
Justin Duff.
The school was started today, you know?
Great job. Well, I see a retiree here, Ms. Joan DePlessis, who's been in our administration office. She's been wonderful. She's such a great worker, but very, very, and a very, very pleasant person. And I just want to say, Joan, you're going to be missed and we want to wish you a happy retirement. It'll be hard to see you go, but we thank you for your many years of service. Yeah. I was talking to Joan recently. She came up and said how appreciative she was of everyone in the school system and how much she had loved her job, and we really are going to miss Joan around here. She is quite a character in many, many different ways and just a good person, so we will miss Joan. Okay. Are there any questions or any other comments? Mr. Long?
I noticed we have a principal that may be going out of medical.
She is out of medical.
She is too fast, yeah.
Will we just have the assistant principal run things?
We have the assistant principal who's acting as the principal, and then we have Ms. Moynan who's acting as the assistant principal. And Mr. Cohen will help out in some ways with the students on a part-time basis. So we feel that we have it covered. And we're hoping that Ms. DeFess recovers as soon as possible and is able to get back with us.
So we don't have an estimate of how long she might be?
She's undergoing treatment, yes.
Well, best wishes to her. Thank you.
If you know Mr. Cohen, he kind of walks around and helps out tremendously, you know, and is doing a great job. Ms. Moynan is very capable, too, you know, so the school's in, it's in good shape.
Yeah. Well, it's great we can call upon Mr. Cohen, for sure. And our best wishes to Ms. Susan DeFess and we'll keep her in our thoughts and prayers for a recovery.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Graham Berry. Great job on staffing everyone for day one. Great job. Okay. Next item is a finance item. Mr. England.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart. It's adoption of the 2016 Adlorm Millages. Mr. Fernandez.
Sir, thank you. Okay. In your package, you have the resolution which will adopt the 2016 Adlorm Millages. As you recall, this is a reassessment year, so we will be adopting the adjusted millages determined by the legislative auditorium, Louisiana Tax Commission. So for your perusal is the actual resolution that you will be asked to pass at the regular meeting. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board members? Mr. Fernandez, how many millages?
How many mills? We'll have 35.72 mills of operating and constitutional millages and another 5.5 of debt service. And I reminded, this is the last year we'll be assessing the debt service millage. So the total will be 41.22 mills.
Ms. England?
Yeah, Ms. Daisart?
So next year, the millages will go down because of the debt service?
No. As you recall, in the election in April, the voters voted to repurpose the debt service millage as a maintenance millage. So it'll be the exact same thing.
Okay. And this will take place for the 2016 tax year?
Yes, this will be for 2016, tax year 2016. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
One more time, 41.22.
41.22 is the total, including the debt service.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes. How this millage that we have for support of schools in St. Bernard Parish, how does that compare with other school districts around us?
It depends. It's hard to compare. We're lower than some, we're higher than others, but you also have to take into account the tax base for the different districts. So some of the districts that we might have a higher millage of, the reason as it's low is because a tax mill generates a lot more than it does for us.
Right.
But I think we're, we're, we're not extremely.
So for your perusal is the actual resolution that you will be asked to pass at the regular meeting. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the board members? Mr. Fernandez, how many milledges?
How many mills? We'll have 35.72 mills for operating and constitutional milledges and another 5.5 for debt service. And I reminded us, this is the last year we'll be assessing the debt service millage. So the total will be 41.22 mills.
So next year, the milledges will go down because of the debt service?
No. As you recall, in the election in April, the voters voted to repurpose the debt service millage as a maintenance millage. So it'll be the exact same thing.
And this will take place for the 2016 tax year?
Yes. This will be for 2016, tax year 2016. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And one more time, 41.22?
41.22, that's the total, including the debt service.
Dr. Graff?
Yes. How this millage that we have for support of schools in St. Bernard Parish, how does that compare with other, other school districts around us?
It depends. It's hard to compare. We're lower than some, we're higher than others, but you also have to take into account the tax base for the different districts. So some of the districts that we might have a higher millage of, the reason as it's low is because a mill generates a lot more than it does for us. But I think we're, we're, we're not extremely.
Depends on taxpayers on the rolls, right?
Yes, sir.
For example, just in the neighboring parishes, St. Tammany levies a significant number more millage than we do. Significantly more, as some of you have found out. Whereas Plackaman, for example, has a few number of mills, but for us, one mill generates about $300 and some odd thousand dollars. Well, for Plackaman, one mill generates a significantly higher amount of actual dollars. So while their millage rate might be lower, their dollars generated are higher. But in St. Tammany, it's greater in both ways, what can be generated in the number of mills that they assess for schools.
Your industry in a particular parish makes a significant difference on also what they can bring in as far as tax dollars. Yeah, some of those rural parishes without any industry, they have to have quite a few mills to make do with their school districts, probably a lot more than 40, 41.22. That's it.
That's it, Dr. Graff? Anyone else? Mr. Long?
So, Ms. Foche, in keeping, in doing this, we're keeping our milledges exactly like they have been. It's not a, it's not a...
The revenue will be the same. Because of the reassessment year, there's a slight adjustment on the actual amount of the millage, but the revenue generated will remain the same.
Okay. So taxpayers won't be paying any, I'm sorry, taxpayers won't be paying any extra, and we won't be getting any additional income, right?
Some might be paying a little more, others will be paying less, but the total amount to the school district will be the same.
The same. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Overall assessment, right? Yes, ma'am.
The assessed valuation of the property in the entire St. Bernard Parish has gone down this year. While some individual assessments have gone up, others have gone down, but the net value
Okay. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to bring this through full board?
So.
We have a motion with Dr. Graff, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Further questions? For Mr. Fernandez? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay. Mr. Fernandez, you're gonna stay with us here for a minute, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. By item number eight. Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, that's your, that's your...
Yes, sir. Also in your package is Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. The board adopts this every year in conjunction with our audit. Basically, it's a questionnaire which asks for certain information about the school districts and asks a series of questions, which basically, just the questions are asking us if we're complying with all the laws of the state of Louisiana related to school districts, finance, and budgets and the like. And I'm happy to announce for I don't know how many years, we, again, have complied with all the laws of the state of Louisiana. So we are voting, we are marking affirmative for all the questions, and we're asking you to adopt this so we can present it to our auditors when they come in for our audit next month.
That's wonderful.
Yes, ma'am. They usually come in the month of September to perform our audit.
And this is yearly? Every year we do this?
Yes, sir. This is required to be done every, by the state.
Mr. Warner?
I'll make a motion that we move the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire through the board for approval.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Dr. Lewis. Any other questions for Mr. Fernandez? If not, cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Going to item number nine, superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Foche?
We were asked to monitor the situation around Davie School, the construction on Paul Drive. We have, you know, had a cooperative effort with the Sheriff's Department in rerouting traffic while the parish is doing the construction with that little bridge over Paul Drive. That will be continuing until mid-September, but if anyone was around there today, there was that massive effort and cooperation with the Sheriff's Department as they rerouted traffic. So while we know it's an inconvenience not only to parents, but also to the residents of that subdivision, but we're keeping everyone informed, and to this point, it's been, well, it's only been one day, but everybody's been cooperating fully on that. We have another situation at Lacoste for the car riders. It's been a very long line in the past, and we had gotten together with the Sheriff's Department and Mrs. Isart as well in trying to reroute the car-riding line in the afternoon. It worked out pretty well today so that we would have less disruption with the neighbors. So we're gonna monitor that situation as it goes on as well, and hopefully, we will improve that traffic flow for this coming school year. And then, just as the Super News said, we just wanna remind everyone out there that our Day of Reflection Breakfast will be Friday, August 26. Tickets are available. They can call here at the school board office to Shelby, and we'll be happy to reserve tables for anyone who wishes to attend. It'll be our 11th annual breakfast.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Foche. I just wanna thank the people for being patient at the schools until we get everything arranged with all the traffic, and till the bridges are complete, Lacoste's get the traffic flowing properly. Really appreciate the people's patience. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to thank the sheriff's office. I saw they were at several of our schools today, helping out on the first day to make sure the buses and, you know, all the lines for pickups and our students were safe. So thanks to St. Bernard Parish Sheriff's Office, too. Ms. Long?
Quickly, Ms. Foche, the cost of the breakfast remains the same as it was?
Yes, $10.
$10.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
You have two?
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, and a second by Ms. Asserita. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye. Aye. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you, and good night. And happy school year to all our students and all of our employees. Good night.
There we go.
She gave you a note.